I'm hoping Brian. I could wish for thinking, bro.
No, no, I knew you. I wish for thinking like you wish for thinking. Let's do it right.
Wish for thinking, my man.
Excuse me, everyone, if you could take your seats and put your phones on vibrate. Be greatly appreciated. The time is five thirty. I would like to call the Lindop board meeting to order. Can we get a roll call?
For President Griffin.
Present.
For Vice President Hannah.
It's absent.
For Member Alexander.
Absolutely.
For Secretary Taylor.
Present.
For Member Dawson.
Present.
For Member Morris.
Present.
For Member Williams Wilford.
Absent.
Thank you. Was that her?
Was that Ms. Wilson?
Mr. Allen. Mr. Hannah.
Oh, okay.
That's Mr. Hannah.
Okay, now, if we could have the pledge of allegiance. Thank you. Now, if we can have a moment of silence. Next, we have spotlight on success. Featuring Kid Millionaire.
Good evening, Board members, community members, teachers and staff. Thank you so much for being here. Today, we have the honor of grade eight, and they're going to present to us Kid Millionaire. Ms. Stewart, please introduce your students.
Thank you, Ms. Oh, excuse me. Thank you, Ms. Oh, and Board members. My name is Ms. Stewart. I'm an eighth grade math teacher. It is my great pleasure to bring up three wonderful eighth grade students to talk about the Kid Millionaire program. And also thank you toward the supporting students in the audience. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm happy to join you again. My name is Cassandra Moore, and I am class of two thousand and twenty-three. I'm eager to present to you the Kid Millionaire program.
Good evening. My name is Neveah Nichols, class of two thousand and twenty-three, and I'm ecstatic to introduce the Kid Millionaire program.
Good evening, Board members. My name is Peyton Kane. I'm a part of the wonderful class of two thousand and twenty-three. Kid Millionaire welcomes scholars to inspire others to lead and live a prosperous life journey.
In these following clips, you will see Ms., you will see students engaging into Ms. Wood's conversation. Students are speaking about. Students are speaking about how to become, their thoughts about believing and becoming possible, wealthy and prosperous. Students also interview each another and wanted to. Wanted, I wanted to see if they had the hireable qualities to become, yes, higher qualities. Students came to school just for success and ready to impress.
The Kid Millionaire scholar is committed to the process that prepares their young minds to create the life that they deserve. We even came up with checklists. The checklist include the following: creating a weekly goal and keeping it with you; setting a mood for your money; recognizing your self-beliefs; identifying abundance and lack in your life; and adopting prosperity-thinking habits. In the following slides, we have student examples of their own checklists.
A key part of this class is the great IMs. It is what you believe in. We say it every day to remind ourselves of who we are and what we, and what we stand for. Here are some student great IMs. And our great IMs are: I am confident, I'm respectful, and I am smart.
I am athletic, I'm a leader, and I'm a hip-hop artist.
I am respectful, I am responsible, and I am beautiful.
In this clip, we, in the next clip, we did an activity to release resentment and to forgive others.
I release a let go.
I release a let go.
I forgive myself.
I forgive myself.
I forgive you.
I forgive you.
Of hatred.
Of hatred.
Of resentment.
Of resentment.
I love you and let you go.
I love you and let you go.
You are free.
You are free.
And I am free.
And I am free.
And so it is.
And so it is.
The Kid Millionaire program is integrated into our electives. For example.
In financial literacy, topics explained are budgeting and saving, career planning, and financial smart goals.
In debate, topics discussed are rich versus wealthy, lax versus abundance, ideal self versus current self, and poverty versus prosperity.
In forensic science, topics explored: evaluating spending habits, investigating financial accounts, and analyzing psychology behind spending habits.
We look forward to seeing you on March seventh at the Kid Millionaire Generational Wealth Building Night. Topics that will be touched on are avoiding financial pitfalls.
Opening savings account and receiving a twenty-five-dollar savings certificate.
Managing your money personality and student entrepreneurship.
That is the end of our presentation. Thank you for listening, and Ms. Woods will touch more on the Kid Millionaire program. Thank you, and have a good evening.
Good evening, everyone. I would just like to thank you for allowing me to be present and to connect with Lindop Elementary. To connect with the vision of spreading prosperity-conscious thinking, it is of urgency. It is much needed, and I cannot applaud the superintendent, Dr. Janice Jackson, and Dr. Betts, and the entire team for understanding the importance of our youth being able to connect and relate to avoid financial pitfalls that will hinder them throughout their entire life if they do not get the lesson now. What you teach your children now connects with their later, and it also connects with their present. When I, when I first met Dr. Jackson, and I always say things happen for a reason. And we connected, and we definitely was in a, in a space of understanding how we could transform our students' minds, as well as the teachers' minds, who are teaching the students on an everyday basis. As a former teacher, we are with the youth sometimes longer than the parents, and I know that we make a profound impact and influence them in so many different ways. So with Kid Millionaire being brought to Lindop Elementary, it's a space to be of understanding, to continue to growth and development, and continue to push and cultivate them to become prosperous, to open up bank accounts, not just for the savings, because we know that saving doesn't bring you the wealth, but the investing do. And so with that being said, Kid Millionaire connects with investing with the person first, because if you don't understand who you are and the value of self-worth, you're just gonna have a strong disconnect with saving, a strong disconnect with investing, a strong disconnect with donating and giving back. So we want you to understand that this is critical. The COVID-nineteen pandemic brought things to surface that, guess what? Parents are living paycheck to Monday. A lot of parents and people across the board did not have emergency funds. And so with that being said, it was more or less forced to talk about the financial urgency that should be brought at the kitchen table all the time. It's a discussion that needs to be had, and it deserves to be had. I would like to thank each and every one of you, thanking my scholars for connecting and being in a space of being a catalyst for others and passing the torch to your fellow peers, to the seventh graders, to the sixth graders, because it's not about you. It's about everyone, to be inclusive, to have equity, to have that diversity, because everyone in here deserves wealth. Everyone in here deserves to be prosperous. And so on that note, I bid you adieu, and I thank you.
Well, I, for one, would like to say that I'm very impressed with what the, what the students had to say, and also with what you shared with us. I had explained to Dr. Jackson earlier this week that one of the highlights of my school learning was my home teacher teaching me how to budget and to live according to that. And that was something that I have taken all through my life's journey. Would anyone else like to say anything?
I just wanted to take this opportunity. I'm Board Member Jeanie Alexander, and I just wanted to let you all know, I think that generational wealth is a conversation that definitely needs to be had with our children, starting at, you know, ages of, you know, as early as, you know, when they can start collecting their allowances, you know, five and six years old. I think it's really important to start those conversations. It helps them in different areas of just math, but accountability, as well as the whole economic aspect of it. So I do think that it's a great thing for our Lindop students, and I'm really glad that the students were very receptive to it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, next, we have. Well, before we do our public comment, which will be next, and I have a Ms. what is it? Shante Harris, but I would like to read this statement before we go into that. We are, we now open the public participation section of our agenda. At this time, members of the community are invited to address the board. We ask that each commentator state their name, their town, prior to delivering their comments. Each public comment is limited to three minutes. If multiple individuals wish to address the board regarding the same agenda item or subject matter, the board asks that the group designate a spokesperson, so as to limit duplicate comments. For purposes of student privacy, we ask that comments commentators avoid identifying or referring to individual students when delivering comments in open session. Finally, as a reminder, public comment is not intended to be a dialogue or conversation. Rather, the purpose of public comment is for the board to listen to our constituents. Issues raised during public comment may be taken under advisement as the board deems appropriate. I'm Ms. Harris.
Hi, my name is Cherie Younger. I wanted to, Shante wanted me to speak on her behalf. So my name is Cherie Younger. I'm from Broadview, and I just wanted to discuss some of the issues that are, some of the parents have arose as far as how they feel when it comes to their children at Lindop. We want to thank all of the teachers and educators for everything that you guys are doing. We think you're doing an amazing job. Some of the main things and some of the, the common threads that came across my attention were that safety, academics, and bullying were some of the main subject matters that were brought up after we spoke with several of the parents. Of course, not all parents have the same issue, but we want to make sure that these things are handled and kind of put into a protocol before things escalate with further students. So one of the main concerns when it comes to safety is we want to make sure that our children are safe in the presence of the school. We're not saying that. That I believe right now there may have been a communication error that it feels with some of the parents. It's hard to get communication back, or it's hard to get feedback or follow up when it comes to certain situations. So we just want to make sure that if you guys have our parent, our students, I'm sorry, that the parents are able to get, you know, the proper information that they need when they're asked of it, and the follow-through is there. Also, when it comes to academics, a lot of the things that we heard was that the parents felt like the, the homework wasn't relevant to what the student was learning, or they didn't understand or know how to complete the assignments. So we want to make sure that we brought that up, so that we want to make sure we set our children up for success always. And I wanted to have Shante speak briefly on, you know, her concerns and, and, you know, matters that she wanted to discuss.
So my concerns really is that some of you may know, some of you may not, but it does involve my daughter and her safety here, and she was approached by someone here.
Excuse me, excuse me, ma'am.
And, yes.
We're allowing you to speak.
I am speaking.
No, but in closed session, because we.
I didn't get a closed session.
You didn't get a closed session?
No, I did not. Did not get a closed session, nor did I speak to anybody. Nobody has contacted me, nobody has called me, nobody has reached out concerning my daughter nor this situation. My daughter has not been in school for three weeks since January because of this situation that lack of empathy from the, from the school that has not been handled, and I feel like now that my child has not been in school, I am forced to be able to take her out because of her safety, and I fear retaliation.
Okay, I do have you down for speaking with the board that you were granted. That you were, I had sent you a text message with the board on it that we were granting you a meeting with the board.
I never received an email. I never received, I've never received an email back from the superintendent, nor have I received any email back from anybody, nor a phone call.
Okay, for that, if that is the case, I do apologize for that. But because of specific guidelines, we cannot discuss a specific student or incident in open session. We do have you down to speak with us in closed session with the full board.
Okay, so that, I apologize that I had to hear about the, the moment to speak to you privately right now. I wish, like we said, communication would have been better. And as everyone can see now, now that we have this dialogue, how important communication is. So this entire time, I felt unheard, not taken serious, no empathy, nothing. And this is how it has to get handled in front of everyone.
Ma'am.
And my.
As you can see, your time's up, and, and Ms. Griffin offered you the opportunity. You'll be able to come and speak to the board about your situation during closed session.
Okay, I declined, I declined the closed session.
Oh, Emily Baufeld, attorney for the board. Okay, if you, you'll have the opportunity to address the board in closed session, if you'd like to at that time.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, moving. Are there any other public comments? Okay, next, for your request. Yes, Madam President, community members and staff members. There was one for your request, asking questions specifically about attendance and a substitute teaching. That for your request has been satisfied. Thank you. Next, upcoming events and correspondence. Board Secretary Tanya Taylor. Madam President, we don't have any correspondence for this meeting. In your agenda, you can read on the upcoming events and correspondence on your own. Okay. Next, can I get a rec, can I get a motion on the consent agenda?
Your mic not on? All right, good evening, Board Member Hannah. Vice President Hannah, I'm sorry. I make a motion that the board approve the Lindop District ninety-two payroll for January sixteen, two thousand and twenty-three, through February twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three, and the amount of four hundred and fifty thousand, three hundred and seven dollars and seventy-seven cents. The activity account reconciliation for January twenty, twenty, twenty-three, the Lindop District ninety-two accounts payable for January seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three, through February twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three, and the amount of three hundred and twenty-nine thousand, two hundred and forty-four dollars and twelve cents. The regular open session meeting minutes for January twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-three, the regular closed session meeting minutes for January twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-three. The special open setting, open session meeting minutes for January twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-three. First read of policies for sixty and for one fifty, first read and adoption of policies for one eighty-two and seven one zero zero. Second read and adoption of policies to one hundred, four, ten, for one forty, four, one sixty-five, five, twenty, five, two, twenty, five, two, fifty, five, two, eighty, five, three, twenty, five, three, thirty, six, fifteen, six, two, fifty-five, six, two, sixty, seven, fifty, seven, one, eighty, seven, two, fifty, seven, two, ninety, and seven, three, forty.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
Tanya Taylor, a second.
Is there any discussion? Can we get a roll call?
For President Griffin.
Yay.
For Vice President Hannah.
Yay.
For Secretary Taylor.
Yay.
For Member Alexander.
Yay.
For Member Dawson.
Yay.
For Member Morris.
Yay.
For Member Williams Wilford. Absent.
Motion passes. Old business. We have a presentation on year two thousand audit with Chris, what is it? Year two thousand and twenty-two audit.
Good evening, Board of Education, staff members, administrators, and community members. Tonight, we have Chris Skollet from Evans Marshall and Peace. He is acting partner for the audit firm, and he will be going over the FY twenty-two audit for the school district. And here is Chris.
Good evening, Board of Education. Thanks, Scott, for introducing me. I am a CPA and partner for Evans Marshall and Peace, as Scott said, and I'm here to present, present to the presentation for the two thousand and twenty-two audits. You know, the main purpose of a financial statement audit is to provide assurance that the financial statements are presented accurately and to express an opinion on whether the financial statements are fairly presented. So the audit report, the opinion, the most important page would be on page one, and this year, the audit opinion was moved forward to basically just give the opinion without having to dig into the audit report itself. Most importantly, the district received a unmodified opinion, which is obviously the goal of an audit. And then also for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two, there was a new implementation for leases. Basically, leases are now considered debt. They kind of flow through from copiers. Where before, not for schools per se, but these bigger municipalities that would have building leases, they were kind of off the book financing. So Gadsden said, you know, that's considered debt. So unfortunately for schools, it kind of trickled down to copier, so it didn't really have a financial impact on the statements itself or the opinion, but it did just create a new standard, which is found within the audit report. I won't go into too much detail, because copiers within the school district here are minimal, but obviously we have to follow the rules. I'm gonna touch a little bit on internal control, because I know it's a really important thing within districts. Within the audit report, it does talk about internal control, but my job as a financial statement auditor isn't to report on internal control. But we also, we do go through controls to make sure that they're sound and adequate. So for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two, internal controls were sound inadequate, which ensured the integrity of financial information and accounting information, which promoted accountability and fraud prevention. You know, with Cook County, there's a law, obviously, that you have to utilize a treasurer, so that's kind of a third wall for controls, which helps. You know, other counties out there don't have the treasurer, so it just creates a little bit of control barrier, but here, controls are really good. I also want to discuss the difference between accrual versus cash basis. Monthly board reports here are on the cash basis, but the audit is on an accrual basis. So you know, the, the main difference here is that accrual basis revenues are recognized in the period in which they are earned and become measurable, while expenses are recognized when incurred. So in a non-CPA term, what you see monthly is what hits the bank. When my firm comes in, we actually set up receivables and payables, so there's a little variance with the numbers that you see monthly compared to what you see within the audit report. Most importantly, ISB's financial profile score. So this score is one of the benchmarking tools used by analysts to evaluate a school district's financial health. At one point in time, is an assessed as a set of indicators selected by the state. This year, Lindop did receive a perfect score, four out of four, which is recognition the highest category of financial strength, requiring little or no review by ISB. So that's something that should not go unnoticed. It's, it's rare to have a district be perfect, four out of four. So I commend, I do commend the board for that. My firm audits roughly thirty school districts, and not many districts do receive a perfect score. I'm not going to go into too many numbers, but I did want to remind the board. You know, in fifteen years doing financial audits, there's been a huge pump in school district monies with COVID relief, with CARES and ARP, and it's going to continue next year, and it could run into twenty twenty-four, and I just, I just want to, the board to just realize that these monies will eventually dissipate, you know. We're seeing growth in fund balances, but it's because we had a pump of, of, of these monies that, that they're going to go away. You know, so a lot of these school districts have inflated amounts, but it's not going to last forever. So I, I don't want something that looks really good. It's gonna, it's, it's eventually going to go away. So it's just something to, to keep in mind, because like I said, in the years doing this, I, I've never seen so much money being pumped into school districts, and it's going to go away. So, you know, with that being said, I, I'd like to thank the board. I'd like to thank Scott for his hard work. He's very timely. Communicates well. I'm sure I'm a pain in his butt, but you know, that's kind of how it goes with an audit. So I'd also like to thank Dr. Jackson, too. It's always a good time to come in here. We get in, we get out, and we get the job done. So I'm not going to keep it too much longer than that, and with that, I'll take any questions the board has for me.
There are no questions, but thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Cheryl Griffin, I have a comment to Scott, the administration, and Dr. Jackson. I would like to say job well done. Cheryl Griffin, I have a comment to Scott, the administration, and Dr. Jackson. I would like to say job well done.
Especially on the four out of four.
Any other comments? Okay, next, we have an update on property tax relief grant. Mr. Barrani.
Good evening, Board, Administrator, Staff, and Community Members. Just an update on the FY 23 Property Tax Relief Grant. The district did submit our application to ISB. There was approximately $50 million available to school districts out there. Um, unfortunately, Lindop was not eligible, um, based upon the school districts that entered their applications for the Property Tax Relief Grant. In the original application, we were number 47 on the list, and we knew we needed some help if districts didn't apply for it. On the last list with all of the districts that submitted, there was roughly 130 districts that submitted. Thirty, um, school districts, 32 school districts received the funds. Um, on the final list, Lindop was number 40. If the board would like to view the final spreadsheet out there for those districts that submitted, it was submitted in board book, and it's also available under ISB, under the Property Tax Relief Grant. Um, like I said, this was just something that unfortunately there was too many school districts ahead of us to receive the funds. That concludes my update. Is there any questions by the board?
Anyone? No, and thank you. Okay, next, we have an update on the construction project. Mr. Valentine.
Good evening, Board Education, community and staff. With the updates you on the construction coming up this summer. We put this, uh, construction project out to bid on January 16th. We had a mandatory bid meeting on the 31st of January. All the bids was due back on February 9th. And we look to bring this back to you next month for approval. We had a total of seven contractors that came out, uh, at the pre-bid meeting. Five of them submitted bids. The lowest bid came in at 293,658, which was Cafe Construction. After reviewing the bids, uh, we would like to grant the construction project to Cafe, Cafe Construction. This is also a letter of recommendation from our Architects Archive, who also recommend, uh, Cafe Construction for the project. Again, the project total cost is 240, 293,658. And, uh, we'd be looking to bring this back to you on the 21st next month for water. Any questions?
Anyone? Uh, thank you for your due diligence. Okay, next, we have presentation of state of the district. Oh, is there something else?
Good evening again. I was going to update on builds and grounds and facilities. Uh, we're looking to bring back our recycle program, uh, pushing towards green ribbon. This is a program where we educate kids and the students, as well as the staff, the importance of recycling. We'll be collecting recycling weekly, and we will be random recycle by weight, and we will keep these number and report these numbers monthly of how much we have been recycling here at Lindop. Uh, next, uh, my next slide is about, uh, app that, a software that we've been using as cup cleaner. It's called Cup Clean. I'm very excited about this being here at the school. It's very useful. Uh, we can do digital inspections throughout the facility. We also can submit work tickets to the staff, and also we can do use this as a preventive maintenance, uh, law. So it will alert us when we need to do our preventive maintenance around the building. And it also, uh, keeps our inventory, uh, helps keep our inventory. And another project that we're working on inside the building now is getting the retractable backboard up here in the gym. Uh, replace the witch, the witch only replaced, that's the device that let the ramps up when we have in programs or events at the school, so you can be able to see the stage. Uh, the device that we have now is obsolete, and also the part that we use to let the ramps up is now broken. So we did try to just to get a few quotes, and we are with the lowest quote, and we're looking to get this replacement really soon inside the gym. It's going to be replaced by an electrical witch, where we can use a key operation system and let it up and down. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Board members, community members, teachers and staff. Thank you so much for having us. So we are going to be talking about student achievement. So we had our board retreat, and there are some students that, when we had the board retreat, I wasn't able to call upon, but however, I have their data now, and I wanted to share that with you. Before I share the data, I want you to know that students that are below the 40th percentile, meaning that they're in grade eight and they're fourth grade and under, chances are they are never going to be able to catch up if we do not do the prescriptions that we're doing and making sure that we're differentiating instruction. With that being said, I want us to look at student number 25. So student number 25, um, in the fall was at a grade seven level, and in the winter for ELA, still at a grade seven level. Student number 26, um, in the fall was at a grade seven level, in the winter at the grade seven level. Then we have student number 32, currently at the eighth grade level, and in the fall, they were at the eighth grade level. Students that did not test have now tested. Uh, one of them is at the third grade level, and one of them is at the fifth grade level. So what does this mean? This means that the teachers are working diligently in terms of the prescription in order to, uh, close the achievement gap. In addition, we've added the math. So for grade eight, you can see the math for the fall and the winter here. Any questions regarding the proficiency and what we went over at our board retreat? Okay.
Good evening, Board of Education, teachers, staff, and guests. I want to pay close attention to with the proficiency levels is tracking the tardies and absences. And since we're on this page, uh, paying close attention to student 32, you notice in December, we have tardies, 12 tardies, and in January, went down to four. So since the new implementation of the expectations that we implemented on January 10th, we're seeing a positive, uh, trend downwards with tardies. Now, in terms of absences, on parent teacher conference, uh, day, I met with 10 out of 11 parents, two being eighth grade, uh, parents in general. And what we talked about is we went through the attendance report, and we just went through each and every day. And we just made sure that any illnesses, things like that were tracked. If it was disciplinary, uh, things that happened in the past, we looked at that, uh, different ways to do that. And then some were offered plans. The plans that were previously used about goals and support from the family to make sure to get the students here. Now, unfortunately, we're living in a time here where we're dealing still with COVID, and we're dealing with flu, and we're dealing with colds. So at the same time, it's about supporting the family, and my goal right now is everybody that has 10 or excess, 10 or more absences, I'm personally meeting with them to just reassure from the school standpoint that we're supporting the families through this, and that makes sure that any communication they have with the stu, the school, they make sure to always call the front office to report an absence and report the illness, as well as drop off any documentation to the school nurse. Any questions?
No.
So in addition to the individual prescriptions in eighth grade, and that initiative also being pushed across the entire building, we are looking at our curriculum and specifically focusing this year on math. As you know, we had adopted ELA materials five years ago, and now we know that our math materials are in some need of updates as well. So we convened a committee, and we created a shopping list, a list of things that we know we need to see in materials and what we need to do for our students. And with that committee, we narrowed down to two different pilots. So in K through five, um, we're doing Envision Math and iReady. And then in six through eight, we're focusing on Envision Math, and that seems to be the frontrunner for that group. Both of those programs have been written post Common Core. They are aligned to the Illinois learning standards that are the adopted Illinois format of Common Core. They rate high for focus and coherence, rigorous, um, materials. They are um, materials that align to the test that we take because they're aligned to the core. So very different from what we currently have. So both of those reports are included here. If you wanted to reference them, we also went into ed reports, and we read everything that we could about these programs before we determined that we would pilot them.
Good evening, Board members, administration, staff, and community members. I'm here today to present about some needs that we have in our special education department. Um, to help me present this, I have our school psychologist, Dr. Kay, and our school social worker, Ms. Cole, to help me present on some of this information.
Uh, so one of the measures tonight talks about, um, having a part-time BCBA, um, come to work at the school. Um, so I'm sure you're all sitting there wondering what a BCBA is. Uh, so a BCBA stands for Board Certified Behavior Analyst. Think of these as behavior experts. They go through a different type of certificate or degree program than Ms. Cole and I have gone through as psychologists and social worker. Um, they have their own certification and complete, um, field experience as a BCBA. They are really experts in analyzing behavior as to the why this behavior is happening and coaching teachers as to what they can do to change that behavior. Uh, so why does Lindop need a BCBA? We need help with our evaluations. Like I said, these people have a unique knowledge that we don't possess. Um, while Ms. Cole and I are very competent in doing our jobs, we've noticed a, um, increased need in the behavioral needs of our students and just, um, daily management of behavior and assisting teachers that we really need an expert in behaviors.
Good evening. As you can see, we have a couple graphs up here just to kind of indicate the rise in behavioral needs pre-pandemic to post-pandemic. You can see that our one-on-one aides have increased sixfold, and then our number of behavior intervention plans have increased more than three flo- fold, up to 20 plans needed. Right now, we are very reactive with the plans. When things arise, we're trying to react to the student, make sure the plan is up to date, and making sure all staff members are on board. We really want to be more proactive in this. We want to institute best practice and review these plans every six weeks, not only for effectiveness and tweaking it more frequently, but also to make sure that it's being implemented by all staff members across school settings.
Um, so we created a proposed schedule for the BCBA. Um, so we'd like to have them here at least one of the days, and we have IEP meetings so that they can attend the parent meetings and be part of the team that presents to parents on how students are doing. Also, as Ms. Cole just said, have that time to be proactive and go and check in on the students with one-on-ones and the students with behavior intervention plans. Make sure things are working. Um, finally, we've noticed an increased need, especially in our primary levels. Um, so we'd like to, I built in, those are actually planned times with our primary, um, grade levels, so they can check in with those teachers. We also envision having some type of requests that teachers can ask for them to come in and observe in their classroom and consult with them. And of course, we left time for parent phone calls so that families are always in on the communication on what's going on. Thanks for listening to our presentation about why we should have a BCBA.
Thank you.
Okay, so the next need I'm presenting is the need for extended school year in-house at Lindop. So extended school year, or ESY as commonly known as, is similar to summer school, but is specific to students with IEPs. They are able to, um, continue progress towards their IEP goals during the break in academic school year. Um, eligibility for ESY can include regression. So we look at, uh, certain times of the school year, winter break, spring break, um, and summer break. And if we notice regression over those breaks, once they return, then, um, we look at a summative to determine if that student will qualify under regression. Another reason would be a critical skill. If they're in the middle of learning a critical skill and a break in their academic school year would affect that and possibly cause regression, that would be another reason why. And then the last is a special circumstance, which, you know, right now, we don't have any special circumstances. Um, but yes, so this is, that is what extended school year is. Currently, we have two summer options for our students here at Lindop. We have the Lindop Summer School Program, which those students are eligible by either recommendation of, by teacher or be based on their proj- projected proficiency on IAR. We also have our PACE ESY program, um, through our cooperative. However, that program is more for, um, severe and profound, severe and profound students, intensive programming, students that need, have more behavioral needs, um, and extensive modifications to their curriculum. And so we have identified 31 students that could potentially need the, uh, extended school year where they won't fit directly into our Lindop Summer School, nor would they fit into the PACE programming. Um, we do have a small handful of students that would still use our PACE Cooperative for extended school year, but there's still a large number of students that's not being, uh, supported over the summer break. Okay, and then the last thing we just want to present is just to talk about the need for a social worker, additional social worker for maternity leave, and I'll have Ms. Cole talk more about this.
Ms. Curio or other social worker will be going on maternity leave next month, and this is just kind of a side-by-side comparison of the minutes for serving students each week and how many students are on our caseload. Uh, we mostly service students in special education, but we also do work with students with Section 504 plans and in the general education. We wanted to make this comparison to show that there are not enough minutes in the week for me to double my caseload and take this on. And without a maternity leave position secured, this will not only impact students in special education, but across all grade levels.
Thank you all for listening to this presentation. Do you have any questions?
I, I had one. I just wanted to understand. I do know that, um, you talked about, um, Ms. that's for, uh, for all the differentiation in student learning, and I was wondering how that impacts when you're talking about the summer school, when you're saying some kids don't qualify for the summer school, but then the other kids who will be in this new program, is that because they need special attention in certain areas? But why don't they qualify for the summer school? Is that what you're?
So we, um, like I said, we go over, um, all of those breaks of instruction, winter break, spring break, summer break. So we've already done summer break. We've already done winter break, and we're approaching, um, spring break. So we look at that information. We, we determine, so ESY is, what I'm proposing here will be for students that receive reading and math services. So if they have academic services in reading and math, they could qualify for our ESY program if they are showing either one of those eligibility criterias. We also have students with IEPs who do not have academic needs, but they also, but they have other needs. Those students will qualify for our Lindop program, our Lindop Summer School program. So I'm, what I'm saying is that we have the Lindop Summer School program. We have a Lindop ESY program as well as still utilizing our PACE ESY program.
But it might not be academic for the, uh, the new program. That might not be needed. It might be something else.
For the ESY program? No, it would be academic. So we will be looking in the areas of reading and math.
Okay.
Right. So yeah, so reading and math, that, so their IEP goes in reading and math specifically.
Okay. Got you.
Any other questions?
Anyone?
Yes.
Board Member Tanya Taylor. I can't sit here and honestly look at the students in this room and be truthful to myself. I do commend each and every one of you. I do thank all the teachers that are here tonight, but we still haven't, we, as a board, I'm only speaking for one of seven. I'm still not getting a feeling of the 70 that we were striving for, that we're even two or three steps closer. My first question that I want to know is, have all the eighth grade? My first question that I want to know is, have all the eighth grade parents been notified to let them know the status of where their students are as far as their academics? If no, I want to know why and I want to know what the plan is.
So for the eighth grade um, parents, we have met with the eighth grade parents. And specifically, what we're uh, identifying and specifying out of this is for the eighth grade. And so if you look at fall to winter proficiency, you see a lot of gains in there. And those were significant gains that I don't want to say that it's just a magic bullet that we were able to talk, but once we began to bring some awareness and also give a tool so that the parents would be able to help, we are seeing a significant growth. And so through those thirty, how many students were there?
Because we only identified the, the, today's meeting, we only identified those students that had not tested. And I believe there was roughly four. I might have missed part of Ms. O's presentation.
It was about four or five.
Okay.
Also, we had the math and all of those levels are on there as well. So the first meeting that we had, it was only for um, E L A, so for English Language Arts. This one, now you have the complete um, profile of all of the eighth grade students and how they fared from fall to winter.
Okay, the second part of my question is, with the significant gains that we have made, congratulations. However, I still have not heard in the last two board meetings, maybe three now, what are we doing as far as seventh down to K, pre-K or kindergarten? Like, where, where are we? Because I, I, I haven't heard it.
Because we were only focusing on the eighth, because those were the ones that was in our seventy and that we wanted to make sure that we got. And so that is why the reporting is there. However, Mrs. O has it for every grade level.
Got it. However, I understand that our focus on the seventy was for our eighth grade students. We're gonna lose those students in three months. Maybe I'm just being uh, my percentage in my head. I want to see more, and I'm not hearing where we are. When you have three more months of school and in a meeting, we're focusing on um, students possibly with I E Ps that don't meet the curriculum for uh, four-day stu- uh, school, we're, we're trying to figure that out. But what are we doing with the rest of the students? So I mean, just give me, just give me personally, just a brief.
The same prescriptions that we have for the eighth grade students are down to the kindergarten level as well. And so everyone has a prescription to work with their children. All of those children who are not meeting or exceeding um, have been identified and they also have, uh, each teacher knows their children specifically and who they are working with and where they need to be at the next step. So it sounds like what you're asking is that you would also like to see for the other grades as well. So don't think that we have forgotten about them. We were just trying to deliver what it is that you all asked for in the eighth grade and making sure. But we have not forgotten about pre-K through seven.
Okay, I thank you for that. I know you guys have not forgotten about the other grade levels, but I think it's important. We, we have been talking about this for the last three months. We've seen some growth with our eighth grade students, but where is our focus at? I'm, I'm still missing a beat here. So I need someone to guide me in the right direction. Something is missing.
So our focus is on tier one instruction, so the general ed instruction. So we're focusing on Cluster One and uh, Danielson. So that's the main thing we're focusing on, is making sure that teachers are honing in on differentiating for all of their students in the tier one instruction. So the way the tiers are, is tier one is whole group. Then we have tier two and tier three. Tier three students are the ones that need the intensive care. However, what we're doing is we're building the teachers up in tier one to make sure that they're reaching each and every one of our students because the goal is to reduce the number of students in tier three and tier two.
Again, I'm sorry. We roughly have three months left, so I'm not counting out our eighth grade students at all. However, I do understand we are work in progress. I get that. But I also believe that we don't have an agenda or a calendar of timeframe as to how we're gonna treat seven on down. So I, I, perhaps next board meeting, if we do have it, or could we start looking at that? Because I still have lost, I feel like we, we, we zoned in on the seventy. We spent a lot of time on the seventy. And I'm not really seeing a conclusion.
Well, we're never gonna see a conclusion because it's, it's ongoing.
I, I get that, but for me to sit here as a board meet, a board member, and I have to look out into the audience and I'm looking at them, that's hurting me.
Yes.
Because tonight, we looked at some gains. They were positive and I can appreciate that. But me as one of seven, I can't sit here and say, I'm gonna say yes to the things that, the apps, the more curriculum, Kid Millionaire, yay, we want to teach our kids how to open up an account, invest and do all that, but that's not trickling in on reading and math. And I'm having a hard time tonight, sitting here, in the last three months, I'm not getting the meat of what's going on.
Okay, I'll let Dr. Betz speak on that.
Thank you so much for bringing that to our attention, and I think you are asking some really good questions. I would just say that in, in terms of Kid Millionaire specifically as an example, there is nothing but reading and math going on in that room. So if we think about literacy skills as reading, writing, speaking, and listening, we're tapping into one of those at any given moment across the school day in order to make stronger any of the other three. And so what you're seeing in, in Kid Millionaire, what you saw in the video tonight, just because that is something that's a shared experience in this room, our students are learning how to put together a solid concept of who they are. So they're addressing their identity. They're learning how to speak publicly. They're learning how to put themselves forward in a vulnerable way in front of their peers sometimes. But in addition to that, they have items that they're reading. They are taking a lot of notes as well as writing during the Kid Millionaire session. And all of our curriculum maps are designed to be interdisciplinary, to tap into reading and writing and math across the school day.
Okay, thank you.
Um, just for my own record here, basically what you had told us prior to this is that the same model that you're using on the eighth grade, you're just gonna bring that model on down for the additional grades. Is that not correct?
We already have, yes.
Okay.
Any other questions or comment, Ms. Alexander?
Uh, board member Alexander, I just wanted to ask a question. If you could, I'm not sure if you can right at this time. Can you just give an example of what a prescription actually looks like? I think that'll give us some context. You know, I know, just if you can think of a, a student, just, just gauge what does a specific prescription for one of the thirty-five, what does it look like for those children that needed, you know, that assistance? If you could explain that. I know we reached out to parents, but can you kind of break down what actually takes place with that?
So what takes place is that the teachers are looking at the, the scores, the map scores. So that's just one data point. Also, they're looking at the formative assessments and informal assessments that they're doing in the classroom to make sure that they're looking at every single data point, not just one data point, because map is just one data point. What they do is map does get help with the standards in terms of at their grade level, what the student needs at their grade level in order to close the achievement gap. So the teachers are then looking at, when, when they scale it, they look at what's highest to lowest. And so they work on what's lowest and they group those students accordingly in order to help them.
Okay, uh, thank you. So that gives me the, the first part. So I have a second part to that. So with, with your explanation, and I know that there's been conversation with parents, can you please just give us some information as what has that feedback been like as it pertains to what is expected at home as well as with conjunction with school?
So you're talking about feedback from parents to teachers?
Yes.
That would have to be a teacher. So we have many teachers here. Who would like to uh, talk about the feedback? Maybe Ms. Stewart, grade eight. All right, Ms. Stewart?
And we also have a parent out in the audience as well, who has been very involved in this, I'm an eighth grader. So if you would not mind coming up.
Okay, so I'm Ms. Stewart, eighth grade math teacher, and my students have made a lot of gains since fall. And that's five months of instruction, right? So I expected to see gains. Um, I think maybe four or five students did not grow. And when the students did grow, I did call their parents and we were all excited about it. So I feel very supportive in my work.
And the ones who did not? And what are you doing for the ones who did not?
Okay, so like Ms. O was saying, that I'm going to my plan and figuring out what do they need, and I'm giving it to them as much as I can. Like if they're tier three student, then we're digging in every day to their specific needs.
Just a extra question, is there additional, like are there additional homework assignments for them? Are there things where they need to get back to you or work, work with them or their parents when they get home? I'm just trying to gauge, you know, if they didn't meet the mark, what are those additional steps that are taken?
Well, it's more specified to their specific needs then. So let's say that we were doing a unit on equations and I say that the student did not master one step. So that student will work on that one step. But if the student already mastered their skill, now we're doing more of that stuff equations. So it's based on what they need. And the homework is tailored to that as well. And also exhibition is tailored to that as well. So if you're tier three, I'm pulling you one-on-one with me. If you're tier two, it's more a meeting three times a week and tier one maybe once a week.
Thank you. That answered my question.
We also have a parent.
Hello, my name is Samantha. Um, my child is in eighth grade and for the last few months, uh, it has been a lot of communication between I and the teachers as well as uh, Dr. Jackson as far as where he is and where he needs to be. Um, there's been significant growth in his map scores from, um, I, I don't remember exactly what point it was that he tested really low, and then uh, there's been a significant increase. I was reached out, uh, the teachers reached out to me, each one of them, um, and let me know where he was with his uh, scores or what have you, even his behavior in class and kind of coming up with a plan. And I can speak as a parent to say, you know, I come up with a plan and say, this is what needs to happen or what have you, but it's a lot of support that I've had with the teachers, even at parent-teacher conference um, a couple days ago um, as far as where he is or where he needs to be. So personally, as a parent, um, I appreciate the support of the, this, the staff, um, the teachers, uh, or what have you. It seems like there's been a lot of uh, effort put into implementing a plan and seeing it through and realizing that it's, the school is one part, the parent has a part, and it really takes a village. So that's where I am with.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, any further questions or comments? Thank all of you.
Um, so is there?
Okay, next, new business. Um, can we get a recommendation for approval on the donation of U N C F?
All right, Vice President Hannah, excuse me. I make a motion that the board approve a donation to the U N C F Scholarship Fund Gala to be held on March first, twenty twenty-three at the Tenley Park Convention Center in the amount of two thousand five hundred dollars.
Cheryl Griffin, I second. Is there a discussion, Dr. Jackson?
Yes, I am a member of the Superintendent Commission and there probably, we represent about maybe fifty or sixty school districts uh, throughout Illinois. We have been a partner with um, the United Negro College Fund. And uh, a lot of my uh, colleagues who are not in high school districts were saying, how does this benefit our children? But we do have the track of what high schools that our children have gone to, and they are offered scholarships as well. Uh, this uh, is something that has been very, very beneficial for several children who might not have had the opportunity because of finances. Are there any other questions? Or any questions?
Uh, no, if I can get a roll call?
For President Griffin?
Yay.
For Vice President Hannah?
Yeah.
For Secretary Taylor?
Yeah.
For Member Alexander?
Yay.
For Member Dawson?
Yay.
For Member Lawrence?
Good.
For Member Louis Wilfert, absent.
Motion passes. Cheryl Griffin. I make a motion that the board approve the sixth grade Lando Taft Field Trip from March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three to May twenty-six, twenty twenty-three with board assistance utilizing transportation funds for a total amount of five hundred and seventy-eight dollars and sixteen cents. Can I get a second?
Hannah, a second.
Okay, Mr. Kenobi?
Good evening, board of education, teachers, staff, and guests. Uh, the Laredo Taft Field Trip Campus uh, is a new field trip. Uh, similar to House in the Woods, the camping trip that the school originally went on. Unfortunately, uh, House in the Woods at Lake Delvin experienced hard times after recovering from COVID and they just don't have the staffing to accommodate us at this time. So we went out with the sixth grade team and actually, uh, Ms. Hankins found this Laredo Taft Field Campus. And this is just in about an hour and a half from us in Oregon, Illinois. And it has the same experience. They work through uh, N I U. So they do outdoor hiking activities with the kids, archery. Uh, you bunk up in a cabin. You have a supervisor and chaperone, just like uh, our House in the Woods. It's an overnight trip. They feed you there and then um, it's just a great opportunity. Uh, right now, what we're doing is, uh, they're gonna have the opportunity for sixth grade, is they're going to I'm sorry. Thank you. So what sixth grade is gonna do is, uh, the parents were given the information and then to inquire about uh, if they're interested in going on the field trip. Uh, seventh and eighth grade already had their parent meetings, so we're gonna do a parent meeting. And again, they have the staffing there. They have a nurse on site. They have accommodations. And then we do eat there and they provide the food. The cost uh, of the field trip per student is sixty-four dollars, eleven cents. And this is a great comparison because before, House in the Woods was a hundred and forty dollars. So substantial lower cost to our families. Uh, the students are gonna have the opportunity to raise uh, do fundraising through uh, taffy apple sales. And then we're just uh, asking for the uh, field trip, uh, school bus cost, just a regular school bus, uh, field trip cost for their five seventy-eight sixteen. And again, they do have a nurse on staff. We do, are gonna fill out medical forms for the students so we can administer medications on the trip. But all in all, it's a very fun overnight trip that I've been involved on in the past with the kids. Any questions?
Anyone? Um, can we get a roll call?
For President Griffin?
Yay.
For Vice President Hannah?
Yeah.
For Secretary Taylor?
Yeah.
For Member Alexander?
Yay.
For Member Dawson?
Yay.
For Member Lawrence?
Good.
For Member Louis Wilfert, absent.
Motion passes. Can I get a motion for the board to approve the seventh and eighth grade trip?
All right, Vice President Hannah, I make a motion that the board approve the seventh and eighth grade Springfield, Illinois field trip from May eleventh, twenty twenty-three to May twelve, twenty twenty-three.
Cheryl Griffin, I second. Uh, Mr. Kenobi?
Uh, thank you again. So uh, this trip's a little bit different. We do outsource through World Strides. If any uh, families familiar with World Strides, we do the Springfield-St. Louis trips and then the Washington, D.C. trip. Uh, the eighth grade uh, did not ever get to go in the past on this trip. So we actually this year extended the invitation, the seventh and eighth grade to go on this trip together. Uh, right now, we have about twenty students, roughly thirteen eighth graders, uh, seven, seventh graders. But they are fundraising right now for uh, taffy apple sales. Every case they sell, um, they raises twenty-eight dollars for their trip. Their trip cost is three hundred ninety-nine dollars. So the more they sell, they actually can raise the full amount for their trip. So the deadline is March third for our first fundraiser for them. So we're encouraging them to do so to cut the costs on their middle school trip. And then um, any, any uh, related like nut allergies, things like that, we're gonna distribute outside of Lindup so you don't have to worry about any of that coming inside. But that's one of the fun opportunities that we offer for our kids for the uh, seventh, eighth grade trip to the St. Louis uh, trip. trip. Uh, these are the dates, the cost. Um, again, Lindop is not inquiring any cost for this, the three ninety-nine per student. Right now, they're fundraising to lower the cost for that. They set up an account through World Strides and they actually, it's a, it's an online payment plan that they sign up for. Any questions?
Not necessarily a question, Mr. Kenobi. Boy, um, Member Tryon Taylor. Um, I know the board in the past always, 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 um, contribute to these trips if a student is short funds via World, World Stride. Um, so I'm, I'm guessing again that the board, you'll have our full support if there's a fallout with any students that are unable to make the, uh, taffy apple sales or they come up short with their cost, that we'll find some way somehow to make sure that we support each and every student.
Yes, Vice President Taylor, yes. Secretary.
Well, thank you. Uh, any further comments? If not, can we get a roll call?
For Vice President Hannah?
Yeah.
For Secretary Taylor? For President Griffin?
Yay.
For Member Dawson?
Yay.
For Member Alexander?
Yay.
For Member Morris? For Member Williams Wilford, absent.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next we have the Board President Report for which there was a question on the actual board calendar. And part of my report is.
Again.
Oh, sorry.
Discussion on the final session of the October.
Oh, thank you. Uh, yes, discussion on the final session of the October Board Retreat. The reason why this is coming back up is because Mr. Cone had spoke with us. We had completed everything with the exception of our personalities. And he had felt that that was something that was really key to, especially with us. I don't know if everyone would be in agreement with me, but I think that it's gotten to the point where now there are some tensions and different personalities are coming into play. And in order to get back on track, so we can concentrate on the seventy percent rather than fighting amongst our, among ourselves. He thought that this would be a good thing for us to get together. So the reason why I called this is for us to basically everyone to express how they feel about that and if it's necessary. Okay, let's start on that side, Mr. Dawson.
Come back to me, come back to me.
Well, we need to let him know whether or not we're gonna do it because he was holding the date for us. So yay or nay?
Yay.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Oh, thanks so much, Ms. Hannah.
What's the date?
This is the final question, uh, now. Yes, tonight.
Well, what do we, what do we want?
Jan. March. Mm-hmm. Yes, it's in March.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, did you finish the roll calling?
Okay, so, uh, motion passes.
No.
Oh, yes. Okay.
What's the date? We got a date on there.
Uh, yes, it was on the sheet that I sent to you guys, but I can get that back to you. Okay, so I take it there's no further discussion on that? Okay, so now we can get into the Board President Report for which we were looking at a board calendar. And if you look into your pack, we have. What is? Are we given the annual planning cycle? I'm not sure if everyone has that, but there are certain areas for which we've already, uh, began accomplishing. Such as item one, the Board Superintendent to get, agree on goals for the year for May and June. Number two was administrative, administration creates action plans July and August. Number three, superintendent given authority and resources to reach goals, superintendent creates goals for her or his own work. Excuse me. Approved by board in September, the board evaluates its own processes and effectiveness December and January. Number five, the superintendent completes a self-evaluation of work and progress towards goals December and January. And number six, the board evaluates superintendent's performance in light of progress towards goals February and March. And number seven, the board evaluates progress towards district goals and changing internal and external. What is it?
Uh, realities.
Realities, May and June. Yes, forgive me, I've got a eye injury. Uh, were there any other questions on the board calendars?
Oh, everything has been satisfied and current, um, as it was spelled out in the calendar. And the next thing is just for, uh, the board to determine when my evaluation date will be and how that process will begin.
Oh, okay.
And we would be setting a time for that. So you can just give some dates.
Any further questions? Okay, and the second part of my Board President Report had to do with our, um, what is it, negotiations meeting, which will be covered in closed session. And that completes my report. Next, we have the Superintendent Report.
So we have for our board member, Jeannie Alexander here. Um, she was noted on, asked to be on the panel for Black History Month, uh, for CTA. They were looking at African-American executives. Thank you, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. And now.
Yes, thank you so much. Um, again, just to utilize and everyone has around, uh, them sort of the profile of what each pillar was for every, uh, board member and throughout the meetings that we hold. Uh, so we will be including those in every, uh, meeting that we have. So every kingdom divided against itself is brought to desolation and every city or house divided against itself shall not stand. Uh, togetherness, trust. If you look at that first picture, it shows, um, everyone's photo, but it also shows it as a unified, uh, Board of Education. And so the first thing that I would like to do is spotlight a staff member and that would be Mr. Joseph. National certification. So he's a nationally certified, uh, teacher. If you would go ahead and play the video, he could not be with us tonight, but had a few words.
To our Board President Griffin, Members of the Board, Superintendent Jackson and Principal Aparo Sefaro. Thank you for having me here today. My name is Gabriel Joseph, your seventh grade math teacher here at Lindop. When Dr. Jackson said that she wanted to spotlight me at our board meeting, I was somewhat hesitant. Because I'm not the type of person to boast about myself or my accomplishments. However, after speaking with her, she reminded me that I have a story to share that could hopefully be an inspiration to others. When I left a very successful engineering career to become a middle-aged teacher, some thought I was crazy. Even one of my college professors, when I returned to school for my masters in math education, asked me, you're leaving engineering? What are you doing? So much for the encouragement. Well, the answer to that question is the same reason why I decided to pursue and obtain my National Board Certification. First, I thank God first and foremost for the gifts he has bestowed upon me. And using my talents to the fullest of their capabilities is my way to show how much appreciative I am of those gifts. Next. In our class while recently researching the history of Motown, our Lindop Black History theme for this year, we learned that in nineteen fifty-nine, Barry Gordy started Motown with an eight hundred dollar loan from his family. Now, as we know, through persistence and perseverance, Mr. Gordy turned that eight hundred dollars into a huge empire. Well, similarly, my growth as an educator and ultimate completion of the National Board is directly linked to the support and mentorship I received from my family and colleagues who continued to encourage me through the tough times and cheered me on in the good times. Lindop teachers and staff are very dedicated and passionate about their work in support of our children. I continue learning from each and every one of them every day. And that brings me to my third and probably most important reason why I entered teaching and pursued the National Board. When I was changing careers, I wasn't exactly sure what I wanted to do. I was getting close to becoming too old to be a new hire and really didn't want to completely start over. But the feeling I just could not shake was I've been so blessed. How could I not pass along the talents and gifts I've been given onto our children? Especially those who look like me and grew up like me. Not that I wouldn't teach all of God's children, and I have. But I believe that I have been assigned here at Lindop for a reason. Every day, I ask my students to do their best, persevere, go for it. As a role model, I believe and I feel only obligated to do the same in my own way and do whatever I can to help them not fail, but succeed, no matter the challenges or limitations they face. Now, understand this is my path. Everyone's journey is different, but no more or less significant. As long as we remind ourselves to get out of our own way, which is easier said than done sometimes, walk by faith, not by sight, and continue to love each other, especially God's children. We can all be an inspiration to each other as all of you have been an inspiration to me. Thank you, Lindop family, for your time and continued support. God bless and go Tigers.
And so we also had a teacher in service that met us with our attorney today, uh, presenting to us on February, uh, sixth, answering a lot of, uh, detailed questions. Next on the list, Mr. Boggs, our very own Mr. Boggs, Grammy nominee and former Lindop teacher coming to pre-K. And so we all want to make sure that we congratulate, uh, Mr. Boggs. Okay, so next, um, I will be participating in a panel on Friday, the twenty-fourth, um, to talk back at my alma, high school alma mater, Whitney Young. And so they did reach out to me and ask me if I would do that. And I told them it was absolutely be an honor. Um, and these are some of the, um, panelists, a lot of them graduated at least thirty years after me, but we got them. The head of marketing at Twitter, the fashion designer, et cetera, et cetera. And Jonathan Jackson, also a classmate. Thank you. Okay, next we have our spelling bee that will be held here at Lindop again on March second. Please come out if you are able to help us and support us. Our spelling bee, uh, will be, we are the, and what's so significant about that is that, uh, there has the spelling bee for the last probably, uh, fifteen to twenty years have been held at another school that was finally broken. And this was the first time that, uh, it was held in a minority school for the regional. And so this will be our second time hosting, uh, very proud of that. And thank you all for your support. Please come on out and join us on March second at seven PM here at Lindop here in the gymnasium. And thank you to everyone that's been working so hard on that. Um, Answer Edith, the Answer Inc. is having a developmental differences expo. Um, and that will be held in March, uh, on March eleventh. And make sure that if you're able to come out to Malcolm X, uh, do come out and join. This will take the place of what typically happens over at the proviso. Next, first daddy and daughter dance since two thousand nineteen. And I have heard so many amazing things about this. It was, uh, very well attended, probably about a hundred and sixty people attended, um, dads. And this has been the first time they've been out together, at least here at Lindop since two thousand nineteen.
Oh, that's good.
All right, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next we have committee reports, personnel committee meeting, which is myself and Ms. Alexander. We did have that meeting on January the twenty-third. And the, uh, specifics of that, we will just go over that in closed session. Uh, next finance committee meeting, myself, meeting to be determined, PACE Committee Governing Board Meeting, Mr. Dawson and Mr. Morris, Wednesday, January the eighteen, uh, twenty twenty-three at six PM. Would one of you like to speak on that?
Uh, just recently, uh, PACE just signed into agreement with a contract with Grand Canyon University to get someone here and, um, teaching internships. And that's how they're filling some of their positions, uh, getting student teachers to come in too. So that was a, a big deal for PACE because they've always had, uh, even more of a problem than traditional schools, uh, getting teachers. And there was also the, subject was broached. Uh, typically every year we get back a return from PACE, kind of like a refund of money that's unused. Um, it was brought up whether or not, you know, the different districts would be willing to, uh, leave a portion of that that we usually get back as, uh, uh, part of building up a rainy day fund. It, it got a mixed reaction and I'm sure similar to the, uh, the superintendents, probably. Some people felt different ways about it. And that's something that's, uh, going to continue to be talked about, but I'll bring it to the board before there's any decision made.
Thank you. Um, any questions or comments? Okay, next we have safety, SEL Committee, Mr. Morris, Mr. Hannah, Wednesday, January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three at four PM. Would one of you like to touch on that?
Well, let Mr. Kenobi tell you about it.
Thank you. Good evening. Uh, so we had a, uh, Safety and Wellness Committee meeting on Wednesday, uh, January twenty-fifth. And we talked about some of the things, uh, in regards to walkie-talkies. Uh, the walkie-talkies have been an issue as of, uh, this year and just, uh, some battery problems, expanding batteries. So we did bring that up. Uh, Mr. Alaskew and I are gonna work with bringing up about three vendors, uh, to, uh, Mr. Hannah, uh, Board Member Hannah and Board Member Morse, uh, in regards to moving in maybe another direction just because of the issues. We do not hear certain frequencies in certain ends of the building. So if there is an emergency, you may get static. Uh, we did talk about, uh, uh, keyless entries and swipe-ins at certain doors. Not every, uh, grade level door like the breakfast store, which is a high-trafficed area, as well as the fourth and fifth grade. As well as the fourth and fifth grade door and well as the seventh, eighth grade door, they do not have a key swipe. So if there's an emergency, you have to go to an alternate door to get a child inside. So we were talking about. Uh, the possible need for that, so we will have, uh. We have some quotes, uh, Mr. Alaskew has some quotes in terms of installation costs. And. Uh, that, that was about it. So we're pursuing communication with our walkie-talkies with that. Of course, we'll bring those proposals to the board. Once we uh share it at the next safety meeting and then the uh keyless entry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I show that your next meeting is Thursday, March sixteenth, twenty twenty three at four PM. Then we have the policy committee meeting with Mr. Dawson and Ms. Williams Wilford. Which was Wednesday, February the first, twenty twenty three at four thirty PM. Um, would you like to comment on that?
You know what? I would give this one to Dr. Jackson in case she wanted to talk about a specific policy. The majority of them were um. Uh, second reads, but is there one in particular you wanted to speak on?
Uh, the only one uh probably that will be coming up before the board, or if you had an opportunity to already look at it, is the homework policy. And the homework policy um now delineates a little more specificity is the amount of minutes that is going to be required. Per grade level uh band.
Thank you. I show that your next meeting date is Wednesday, March eighth, twenty twenty three at four thirty PM. Next, we have the Paris CIA Committee Meeting with Mr. Morris and Ms. Taylor. Next meet, excuse me, next meeting ba- date is to be determined. Then we have the Technology Committee Meeting with Mr. Hannah, Ms. Taylor. Next meeting date is to be determined. Strategic Planning Committee Meeting, all board members, the next meeting date is to be determined. Community Engagement Committee Meeting, Ms. Griffin and Ms. Alexander, next meeting date to be determined. Negotiations Meeting, Ms. Griffin, Ms. Alexander, Wednesday, January the twenty fifth, twenty twenty three at five thirty PM. We will be discussing that in closed session and our next meeting date is Tuesday, March seventh, twenty twenty three at three forty-five PM. Um, that would include, that would conclude all of our committee reports. Are there additional public comments? Nope. Okay, there are none, so. Can I get a motion going to executive session?
I moved at the Tryon Taylor, for Member Tryon Taylor. I moved at the board going to closed session under five Illinois School Code one twenty slash two, C one, four, eight, and nine, and ten. To discuss the appointment. Employment compensation, discipline or performance of a specific employee of the public body. Evidence or testimony presented in an open hearing or enclosed hearing where specifically authorized by law. Security procedures, school building, safety and security, student discipline, uh. Student disciplinary cases and the placement of individual students and special education programs and other matters relating, relating to individual students. At seven oh two PM.
Cheryl Griffin, I second. Can we get a roll call?
For President Griffin?
Yay.
For Member Alexander?
Yay.
For Vice President Hannah?
Yeah.
For Member Dawson?
Yay.
For Member Morris?
Yeah.
For Secretary Taylor?
Yay.
For Member Williams Wilford, absent.
Okay, we are now. Out of open session. Thank you all for coming out.